Okay. It is 6:03 and as we get ready to call this meeting to order, before we get started, I do need to read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting that we're holding is in compliance with the right to no law. Hang on one second, we will do that. As chairperson of the Mont Vernon School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that number one, we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possible by video.
Today, if you're on, can you possibly send me the updated agenda for tonight? I only have the old, original one, for some reason, the newer copy that you sent down with the tax information.
Okay. It is 6:03 and as we get ready to call this meeting to order, before we get started, I do need to read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting that we're holding is in compliance with the right to know law. Hang on one second, we will do that. As Chairperson of the Mount Vernon School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that, number one, we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following the directions and links provided on our website, which is www.sau39.org. Number two, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. Number three, we are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email A. Wallace, W.A.L.L.A.C.E@sau39.org. Number four, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will be adjourned and rescheduled. Number five, please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Number six, finally, let's go ahead and start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where they are. And if anyone else is in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Thank you. So let's start our roll call. Mr. O'Keefe.
Present alone and in the town of Mount Vernon.
Thank you, Mrs. Hinckley.
In my home in Mount Vernon and I'm alone.
Thank you, Mr. Eckhoff.
Hi, I'm upstairs alone with my little puppy dog. But yes, hi.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. St. Dennis.
I am home in Mount Vernon alone.
Thank you. And I am also home in Mount Vernon alone. I appreciate everyone joining us today. I'm just going to pull up our agenda. Bear with me one moment. Okay. We do have time for our first of two public comment sessions scheduled for this evening. So I'm not sure if we have any public present and public comments. But if you are present and would like to make a comment at this time, you can go ahead and use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. I don't see any open questions at this point. Okay, just so that you know, for members of the public, there will be a second opportunity for public comment a little bit later this evening. So you don't lose your opportunity if you don't have anything to say just yet. So thanks for joining us. We are at our consent agenda approval. We have six items on the consent agenda. There's two draft minutes. There is a school calendar, a principal's report for December, facilities update, and also the tax rate document is in there. So I would like to know from the board, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda items one through six? Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull and discuss? Where are we on that? Mr. O'Keefe?
So other than the minutes, I would like if it's possible to pull each one of those because there's a couple of questions for the superintendent and the principal. From my perspective.
I'm fine with that. So why don't we go ahead and have discussion on that? And then perhaps after the discussion, we can go ahead and approve the items since we might be more efficient to do it all at once. So, Mr. O'Keefe, what were your questions on the consent agenda items and which items did you want to discuss?
Yeah, so let's start off with item number three, the school calendar. So some parents came to me inquiring as to with our later start times that we're anticipating, what a delayed opening is going to look like and pushing that stuff back from a morning perspective, starting school at noon, starting school at 11 o'clock. Like, how effective is that going to be with the remaining time? What are some of the thoughts there?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one of the things our principals are going to be providing in their updates in February is their plan for what we do with the late start time. As you know, in Mount Vernon, the hours for professional development are required per the contract with our teachers. And so we need to make sure we're providing that time. And if we want to do something different, like an early release or something, something different than what we've done in the past, we'll have that prepared to discuss in February.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all I have on the school calendar. If anyone else has got something, I can move on to the other two.
I think we're probably safe to move on to the other two, Steve.
Great, thank you. The principal's report in terms of the migration from prior to this week's announcement from in-person to remote. I just wanted to check in and see how that process went for the first two weeks. Looks like we had another, what, 10 folks who went from 30 to 34 K through four, five to six, 13 to 16. How did that process go and are we at capacity now from a remote instructional standpoint?
Yeah, so. Okay. So, yeah, so one of the things that we did, because certainly we discussed whether or not we needed to move a teacher from in-person to remote learning based on those numbers. You know, it's pretty cumbersome to plan for five different grade levels for the K-4 teachers. I will say that a couple of the students who are included in that 34 member are students who had to be quarantined. So their parents did not elect for them to go remote. I mean, they kind of had no choice just based on the circumstances. However, it wasn't like a conscious election to go remote. So we know that that's a temporary thing. However, we did have conversations with our remote teachers and then also teachers in one grade level that has the lowest numbers. We did have extensive conversations about what would be best for the in-person learners and the remote students. And we came to a compromise for the segment that we're in right now. And that is that we took one of the new paraprofessionals that we hired and we designated her just to remote learning. So she's been really great. She has nine students from K to four who she works with pretty closely. And I would say that they're the students who have a little bit higher needs. And so she was great. She observed instruction from Mrs. Brown and also from Dr. Home and then kind of got a feel for what the content was that they were covering and then also the language that they use, the academic vocabulary that they use. And then during the small group instruction time or the one-on-one instruction time, our paraprofessional will poll those kids and then be able to work with them to provide more support. And this helps Dr. Home and Mrs. Brown to be able to, you know, spend more time working with all of the other students rather than focusing most of their time on a couple of key students.
And obviously, this week, next week, and the two days of the following week are going to be a little bit different. What's the game plan of engaging parents and families about their election to move into either remote or in-person in January? Are we going to reach out to them prior to the holiday or the first of the year? So what type of timeline do you need to prepare for potentially moving more in-person instructors over to the remote side of the equation if we end up having a bigger influx?
Yeah, so we've already prepared for that. I will tell you, do you want me to tell you a little bit about that or?
If you could, because parents are asking me these questions and to obviously get your thoughts there is important.
Yeah, absolutely. So we've already planned for that. We're ready to go. So right now, after having some conversations with the two K-4 remote teachers, their highest grade is grade two. Essentially, they have like a full class for grade two remote instruction. And so they have asked for our support and they've asked for us to help to alleviate some of that planning time and also to try to figure out a way to be able to meet the needs of those 10 second grade students. It's second grade that we're talking about. And so what we have done is we have talked to our grade two teachers and we have asked them, as we transitioned to a full school remote environment, we've asked the grade two teachers, classroom teachers from in-school to absorb those remote students as well. Some of those students, the teachers who we have in-person have already, they already know those students because they were in-person earlier in the year. And so kind of the feeling is, it certainly depends on what the numbers look like in terms of parent selections or modality, you know, after the break, after January 19th when we come back. But if those numbers continue to be inflated, then what we would do is we've already figured out which second grade teacher would hang on and stay remote and then just kind of work from there. But yeah, we've been working on this for weeks now.
Perfect. The last question I've got with regards to your report was with the specials, right? And so our music program, our gym program, like we had talked about back in August when we were meeting in the gym. I personally, as a board member, had some strong concerns about the delivery of those content areas back in the spring when we did go remote. I just want to make sure that that still stays front of mind in terms of making sure that there's a game plan to engage those positions to actually deliver content that's meaningful and constructive and moving the goals of our program further throughout the year instead of, you know, once a year quickly doing a or I'm sorry, once a week quickly doing a quick video and not checking in at all and no follow-up and just not delivering content.
Yeah, so I will tell you that, I mean, that's certainly not the expectation. I mean, we've communicated the expectations pretty clearly. But the good thing is that our specialists, they want to be engaged and they want to know, how is it that we can support all learners? What's good about going remote for the entire school is that all students will have access to a full special curriculum. Right now, our current remote students, because of the fact that all of our specialists are just, they are part-time and they can't do everything. So right now, our remote learners are only getting access really to the library media specialist lessons and for the other specials content areas, they can access some things asynchronously. But this will be much more intentional and well-planned and much more meaningful for everybody who's going to be remote because now our specialists will be just focusing on remote as a whole versus being in-person and/or working with the remote students.
Thank you. And just one parting comment, Madam Chairwoman, before I shut up and let someone else talk about this piece. If I could just ask as an administrator that you check in with the superintendent, come up with a game plan to make sure there's supervision with inside those content areas, that there is consistency in the delivery of those programs. Should we extend beyond our January date? Because as a taxpayer, as a parent, as a community member, I want to make sure that we are giving our kids the most. And that's in all areas, not just in classroom instruction.
Can I add one more thing to the remote schedule that we have created and we've solidified for the period where the entire school goes remote? We mirrored our schedule with Clark Wilkins and we actually share some specialists. And so it's, those specialists, they certainly know what the expectation is because they have been delivering instruction for the specials content areas remotely anyway at Clark Wilkins. So even though they're new to our building, or most of our specialists are new to our building, like they've been doing this for several months now. So we've gotten pretty skilled at it.
Thank you. That's all I have for that particularity.
Scott, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Just some questions, Kim, in regards to that schedule. When we do hit the remote time next week and lean in January, is there going to be any modification to the current schedule as is where there's a lot of independent learning time? And could that be used better for the specials to carve out certain blocks of time for certain grade levels so that we know there is some sort of follow-up going on, some sort of live instruction going on instead of the independent side of things? Has that been thought of or talked about yet?
So this is what I'll tell you. So for the students who are currently remote, their schedule will change a little bit because instead of the K-4 teachers having to fit in five grade levels, they're going to just be fitting in four. So the remaining four grade levels will have more time with our in-person instructors. But yeah, so what I will say is, I don't want to cause significant disruptions for the kids who are already remote. Like in talking to parents, we reached out to some parents today and they gave us our preference. Some people wanted to keep their kids with the remote teachers that they know and that they're used to. And then some parents wanted their students to move to the teachers that we have in-person and have a more like dedicated classroom for their grade level. So it will be a little bit different for the current remote students. Where they have their specials will be at a different time, but we certainly will make sure that they have access to all of the specials in the same capacity that our in-person learners have.
So will that be live instruction or will it be considered independent work posted and must be done at a certain time?
So it would be asynchronous work. However, our specialists are going to be available to all students from 8:30 in the morning until 3:10 in the afternoon. So there will be interaction with our specialists. So they have a Google Classroom. They have assignments that students will be interacting with. And, you know, but for the most part, it will be asynchronous instruction.
Is there any particular reason why there is no specific time per grade or per grade blocks that can be used for live instruction to be more of a less loose-ended come-in when you want to and more of a third grade is this chunk this day? Let's get up and move around and do stuff kind of thing.
Yeah, so I'll tell you why. So the reason is because our specialists work either three days or they work two days, right? And so they kind of have to trade off those days when they are here with their partner specialist. And so let's say Mondays, for instance, we have all Spanish or we have all PE. But the thing is that the specialists will be, they're responsible for all of the grade levels, K through six. And if we are not going to interrupt like core content instruction, there wouldn't be a way for them to deliver appropriate lessons for all the different grade levels. So we have a special time. It's the same for every single grade level. We wouldn't be able to fit it in so that they could deliver live lessons throughout the day in a way that wouldn't that wouldn't interrupt instruction for ELA, math, social studies, and science.
Right, thank you.
Do any other board members have questions for Kim at this time? No, thank you, Kim. I just wanted to say thank you again for the really thorough report. It is nice to read what our kids are doing. You know, it's really good to see the updates and it certainly, you know, provides us with a little bit of a glimpse into what's happening in the building. So, you know, I thank you and the staff for providing that update. It is always really lovely to see. So thank you for your hard work. Pete, I see your hand up. You have to unmute.
Sorry. I apologize if my dogs bark out, but anyway. Not sure if this is the place, but I just, my question to Kim and I guess Adam is, is there a handout, a booklet, or some sort of guidance for all our parents who are homeschooling in a way with this remote learning? I know that there are kids and parents that do homeschooling. So I gotta believe there's some sort of guidelines for them to use to be more effective teachers in the home setting. So my question is, are we providing or can we provide anything to our parental group, district-wide, Mount Vernon, that would kind of help maybe guide parents to be a better facilitator of the educational process? I mean, some people are obviously going to be very good at it. But I'm sure that there are a lot of people that are going to be really struggling with this process. And I would assume this is not going to go away anytime soon. So my question is, is there anything we can provide as a school board in a school district to our parental group that would help facilitate them to be better educators day in and day out? I know it's such a super challenge to just throw this on them and say, hey, you're in charge. We need your help here. Is there something out there that's been built out that we could send out an email and say, hey, if you work through this, it would be a better situation? Just a question.
Yeah, so I'll just say, so I know that our assistant superintendent and I have had these discussions. And we actually talked about having a book study for teachers with a handbook called The Distance Learning Handbook. It's something that's new because, you know, this is unprecedented. We've never engaged in this type of instruction before the spring. However, when it comes to parents, every school does actually have a handbook that we created at the beginning of the year for parents. But I will say that, you know, I'm not sure what happened in the school in the spring. But I will say that the way that we've designed our schedule, the teachers are accessible to parents and to students for the entire school day. So I just want to make sure that we're not confusing remote learning with homeschooling because we are not expecting parents to be teaching their kids during this remote period. We do need parents to support us. We need to We do need parents to support us. We need to make sure that students have, you know, a quiet place in their house. We need to make sure that that if, you know, this, we're having trouble with the students kind of engaging in the work that we have the parent's support with that. But no, our teachers are going to be online for the entire day. They might not be live teaching for the entire day, but if if the teacher is delivers a math lesson and then says, okay, now for the next thirty minutes, we're going to turn our cameras off, turn your mute yourself and then I think it's the dogs. And so I just lost my turn of thought. So the teacher says, you know, we're we're gonna all turn our cameras off and turn our, we're gonna mute our microphones. However, if you need something from me, just let me know. That's exactly what we plan to do. So if we have a parent who's, you know, struggling with the math or the student struggling with the math, the parent can just, you know, click the camera back on and hit the unmute button and just say, hey, Mrs. La Boy, I need you to help Sam with with this math assignment. And that's what the teachers are there to do. I'll also say what's great about our new paraprofessionals is that they have been so wonderful with supporting our teachers. They're aside from the the paraprofessionals that we have for special education, our teachers have never had the support that they have right now. And so we want to be able to utilize them to help students who are struggling so that parents are not, they're not the ones who have to be engaging so much with this learning as maybe they were in the spring.
Thanks, Kim. And it wasn't it wasn't a accusation of there wasn't a connectivity between teachers and you folks as far. I'm just, I'm thinking it was more of an outreach to the parent community out there that are really I'm sure at times it's like throwing their hands up and what do I do? Like, I'm not figuring this out here. So that's that's all. I just was questioning that, not not your connectivity with the the teachers being online and and what you're providing at all. I think you guys are doing awesome, but just a quick question, that's all.
No, I I get it. I had three kids at home who were remote learning in the spring. I totally get it. I think Christine, if I'm not mistaken, I think we were kind of planning on doing like a parent sort of info session to help parents. Want to talk about that?
Or yeah, I was waiting to receive a book, The Distance Learning Handbook for Parents because I want to be able to pull from that and give parents resources. We certainly can give some tips and some strategies and we did share some of those last year with parents. But we're hoping for now to get started with our remote learning, what we have posted to our website and we'll be sending out information to families most likely tomorrow with additional information on how their students will be accessing everything, but it will also, we have a little rules of the road document that provides a nice overview of what expectations are and how they can support their children, but we will definitely be planning probably for, you know, hopefully sometime within those first two weeks of January, planning a parent session to support parents in just some tips to help when their child is learning at home.
Once again, you guys are on it. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Scott, I saw your hand.
Yeah, just a suggestion too for grandma and grandpa that are at the house helping out the kiddos. Maybe a one cheater that's font twenty-four that helps them to turn on the computer and log into the right Google Classroom code too. I've heard so many horror stories from every district imaginable of grandma's juggling three kids between the ages of four and seven and don't know what to do and losing their minds. So just a thought in the background too to to piggyback on it. But again, thank you for for all the considerations you're doing. It's amazing.
Okay, that's great. Um, Kim, from your perspective, is there anything that that the board can do to to support you and the staff? Is there anything else that you need that would be helpful for us to be aware of or how's it going?
I mean, I think it's going pretty well. I, you know, everybody's stressed. There's a lot going on. I I would say that we're really lucky because we haven't had, yep, yep, Jess, that would, that is true. I would say that if we had another teacher for dedicated to remote learning, that would just make things so much easier. I think that that would alleviate a lot of stress for our remote teachers, but if that is not possible, I'll just say, I I think it's going really well. We're really lucky to have the support of our PTA. They certainly do things all the time to uplift our spirits. And with that, if I can, I wanted to find a time to plug this in. First of all, PTA came today and delivered, delivered, wow, Massachusetts just came out, delivered point set of plans for all of our, all of our staff members. And so thank you so much for that. They wrote out personalized cards for each staff member and that's just really great. Also, that festival of lights that we had last weekend, so many people came. I mean, I couldn't believe how many cars were lined up and they did such a good job. All of those things just helped to add to our sense of community here, and I think that makes it easier to navigate. But, you know, honestly, it's a stressful time for teachers right now and I think there's been so much, it's like, there's just so much going on and everything is constantly moving and changing. Everybody's just looking forward to like when life is boring again, you know?
Well, thank you for that. And, you know, certainly our thanks are extended to the entire staff and you know, and and the students at the school. I mean, everyone's working so hard. Parents are working so hard to facilitate, you know, these things happening. So thanks all around and, you know, we hope as a board that we can be supportive and and be responsive to the need. So thank you for the hard work that you're doing. Any other questions for Kim? We just had a wonderful discussion. I'm not seeing any right now. So I I think we can move on from the principal's report. I know, Steve, I think you had some questions about the facility update. I did as well. So I'm, I don't know, I didn't see Roger on, but maybe Adam or Michelle, you may be able to address to address it. I know I had a question about the the boiler update, the underground tank. You know, the the things, there are things that need to happen within the next thirty days in order to be compliant. So do we need to worry about that? Is that, I mean, I know Roger's on the ball, but is there any any update that we would need to know, especially reading that, you know, if the public's reading the 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 packet? What do we need to know about that and what's going on with that?
Well, I don't know the specifics and I, of course, told Roger he didn't need to come tonight. I gave him a night off, so luck would have it. But I can find out, but I will tell you, I I don't worry about it because having worked with Roger for many years as I have, I just know that he's on top of it. I mean, we probably wouldn't have identified the issue had he not been here. So I'm very comfortable with him running with the with the problem.
Okay, thanks. Mr. O'Keefe, did you have other questions? What did you have?
It was, it was actually an identical question, the fact that, you know, we are completely out of compliance and, you know, there was a training piece in there as well. I'm kind of surprised that that even happened. So I'm glad to see that somebody's actually on top of that and making sure we get that stuff rectified as soon as possible. Last thing, the world, I want to incur the town a million dollar bill because of a leak or something going on with that tank.
Yeah, agreed. And it looks like we've got, we're starting a bid process for the roof is the other thing that it looked like in there. So I think that that looked pretty thorough to me. I don't have any questions about it. I just wanted to make a comment that I do appreciate Roger's, you know, thorough exploration of our facilities and and, you know, the other administrators who are partnering with him on that. I I certainly want to say that I think that that that's really stepped up a lot and and I feel like our facilities game has been really good the last few years as well. So says a lot for having Roger on staff and I just wanted to thank, you know, thank you all for doing such a wonderful job in that regard. Do any other board members have questions about anything else that's on the consent agenda before we take a vote? Okay, so do, oh, sorry, Stephen, go ahead.
Yeah, the very last thing was the tax rate form. Michelle, can you just take a couple of moments to talk to that? It's the first time I've seen that. I don't recall seeing one last year. There's a reserve line in there for like one point seven, was it? Like, where is that held? Is that with the town? Is the town actually holding one point, I'm sorry, one point? Where'd it go here? There was a recommended sort of reserve that was requested and it was showing a pretty sizable chunk. I'm sorry, one point nine, one point nine million on the last page. Like, where is that?
I'm happy to answer that, Michelle, if you don't mind. So that that's what the town, a town has the ability to retain funds to set aside because they're not guaranteed to get their tax revenue. And so retainage is what it's called. But it's it's basically unassigned fund balance from previous years that's been set aside by the town and held in advance for future years.
Okay, so the the way I read this and I just want to be clear because I'm the representative to the town budget committee, we're going to be meeting soon. The maximum recommended is a seventeen percent at one point six. We currently have one point nine that we're retaining. Ten percent is probably the the need between those two points and nine hundred and eighty-one thousand. So there's another million dollars in reserves right now that's being held back at the town level. Is that the way I should be reading that?
It's not a school district function or decision. It's the decision.
Yeah, I know.
You're you're reading it correctly. But retainage is something that is, even though the, you'll notice that the DRA puts maximum recommended, there is no statutory limit to the retainage that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And this document is the combination of the school and the town information. It's their their final tax rate information, if you will.
And so the total, Michelle, that we gave back is listed on page. Where was that? Page two of four. From a revenue standpoint and appropriation standpoint?
Yep.
Where where's the documentation for the dollar amount that we returned to the town for unreserved fund balances from last year?
On this particular document?
Yeah, because I see a locally retained state education tax. It's negative six hundred and six thousand. I'm assuming that's because we ended up giving that back in lieu of our, no, Adam?
That's just our swept. That's the local state education tax that's kept locally.
Yeah, it should be in the total.
So we.
Credits.
We did receive that then, okay. Okay.
This particular document doesn't show our unassigned fund balance. It only shows the net local school appropriations. So it doesn't show the the actual revenues themselves.
Okay, so there there it was. I apologize. A hundred and forty-eight thousand, which was on page four of four, for the final overlay fund balance retention. That's just a combination of of what?
Well, we can't, the school can't.
Is that the dollar amount that we that we returned, Michelle? A hundred and forty-eight thousand? No, 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 it's not listed on there at all.
No.
All right.
It would be net in with like revenues and credits, but it's not called out specifically. I mean, I'm happy to, there is a document that does call it out. I'm happy to share that.
Yeah, I don't want to waste everyone's time. I just was a little shocked at the one point nine and sitting in the town's reserve, that's all.
Yeah, that is interesting. What is that final overlay then? Because I, I guess I misinterpreted that as well. Is that just, I mean, I know it's not arbitrary, but if that's not the unreserved fund balance, then what is that?
It's a town. It's related to the town activity.
Okay. Okay. I might need a master class on how to interpret that at some point. So I may call you and see what we can do because I I well, those of you who know me know that I don't love getting asked questions that I can't answer right away and that one now is now very funnelling. But thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it. Does anyone have any other questions on this portion of the consent agenda or is someone ready to to make a motion to approve consent agenda items one through six now that we've had a discussion? Mr. O'Keefe?
Like a motion to approve consent agenda items one through six.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mrs. Hinckley, so let's go ahead and do a roll call vote. Well, actually, do we have any discussion before we take the vote? I don't see anyone. Okay, thank you. So Mr. St. Dennis?
St. Dennis, yes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, yes.
Mrs. Hinckley?
Hinckley, yes.
Mr. Eckhoff? Maybe off screen for a moment, taking care of puppies. So I guess we can just note that he is not present at this moment and Lawrence, yes. So the consent agenda passes. Thank you. We're moving on to the FY twenty-two budget and warrant finalization. So we need to discuss the finalized or finalizing the budget, the default, the warrant articles and what we are bringing to the public hearing. So, Michelle, did you have something that you were going to share with us at this time? I didn't see anything in the packet.
So we have a couple items. First of all, we have the budget document itself, which we've been tracking the adjustments in that budget document and the impact to both the proposed budget and the default number. So if the board were to adopt all of the changes that have been proposed, that would be an increase of just under twenty-two thousand to the initial superintendent's proposed budget and a change to the default budget of about about the same, sorry, about the same. So that brings the proposed budget for FY twenty-two to five million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine or five point six percent increase in total. Of that, the default budget would be a five point five percent increase over the current year. So there's, you know, a small change of a point four percent change. The default budget number would be, as adjusted, five million, eight hundred, sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven. So I had submitted a a draft document for the presentation for the public hearing. That document is there's one number that would need to be updated in that in terms of the the budget amount to incorporate the the proposed, the bus contract that was recently adopted. So that would be the last tweak that would bring us up to the five million, eight twenty-one, five eighty-nine. And I'm happy to go through any of the changes or to walk through the the presentation. I also did via email share a draft warrant, which would just give an idea of what the warrant would look like. It does not have the dollar amount plugged in yet for the budget because the board would need to adopt a budget in a we will plug in the default budget. But we can, I'm happy to walk through that warrant and the list of warrant articles that would be on there. And then also there's a draft ballot. The hearing notification, draft posting and the deliberative session and meeting date draft notice.
Okay, first of all, does anyone have any questions on the numbers that Michelle just threw out there? I'm just looking for hands. Stephen?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, Michelle, real fast, when you said the buses were not included in the final or in the copy that you actually sent us, that number again was then what, five, what?
So the budget proposed budget number now is five million, eight twenty-one, five eighty-nine. And the initial link that I sent had the number as of December first. So if you're looking at the link currently, it would have for the presentation page two of the present, I'm sorry, page three of the presentation shows five million, eight one seven oh three five. So it just doesn't have the bus contract in the presentation. Sorry if I'm making that more confusing. The budget document itself
Yeah, because.
reflects the increased amount. The presentation does not reflect that incremental amount for the bus contract.
So what's the total increase that we're going to see over our default budget for us, including the 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 bus contract?
Well, you said the increase over the default, right? So the increase over the default is four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two.
So I think that should I I think we should clearly articulate that in the presentation because if that doesn't fail, we're going to have to actually come up, or if that does fail, we're going to have to come up with that bus contract from from someplace else within the budget. Which isn't necessarily horrific. We're not talking about a hundred thousand dollars, but I just want to make sure the taxpayer understands that that bus contract is is really important.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Michelle about those numbers? I'm just doing a little scan of the Hollywood squares. I don't see anyone with hands raised. Okay.
I was just going to share that number that the board would be adopting, you know, would be a proposed budget number. And I I do want to thank the budget committee in Mount Vernon. They did a fabulous job, you know, going through and working with us to review and analyze the budget.
So the very last question, Ms. So the very last question, Miss Chairman, is the full-time ad that we discussed at one of the joint committee meetings between our food service? Did we make any modifications or changes to that with regards to salary and increase to 1.69 to 1.85 back in 19 and 20? They were dropping, it looks like, to 1.4375?
So with the food service position, my understanding is
That's the piece that we're apportioning back to, to us?
Oh, maybe I misunderstood the question.
Well, there's two parts to that question, actually. So we see an increase back in 18 and 19 that we talked about at that joint meeting that I knew you were going to get back to us on. And then there's a decrease that we're proposing there. So it looks like we're cutting some hours on the food service side to 1.375. It's on page. This is just not working in my favor today. Page 10 in the presentation.
The presentation. Yes, that, that comes from in the proposed changes on the budget, line 21. So there's a little bit of history here. At one point, the food service kitchen manager position was a exempt level position or salaried position. And then it was determined that that position could not be exempt and needed to be an hourly position, and it was shifted at that time. The shifting to the FTE at that time, I think, was not clear because the individual had been working at a salaried or exempt level. So when I talked with John Lash about the actually, actual need for that, and it came up as a question during our budget review process, because it looked like we were increasing the person's time, but in fact, we weren't. So we adjusted the budget down, and that's why I put the explanation on there to show the hours for each of the individuals and changed it in the, the budget document from seven and a half hours a day to six and a half hours a day. So it's not a change. I want to be clear that it's not a cut in the time that she's actually working. It's an adjustment in the budget to reflect her schedule.
Okay. And did we address the discrepancy in terms of what they're compensated at, at the low level? Or do we not address that in the budget?
No, we did not address that in the budget.
I, I know we had talked about that at our, at our joint meeting. Did we have a conversation with the budget committee about that issue? Or no?
I believe the budget committee was, they were present for that discussion.
You know, subsequently, though.
I don't, I don't think there's been a meeting since that meeting, unless Michelle facilitated one.
Okay. So is that something that we want to address tonight, guys? Sarah, you know a little bit about the backstory there with regards to the food service being significantly underpaid versus any competitor in the area? Or peer in the area, I should say.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the summary statement is that during our review of the food service portion, John Lash mentioned that our food service professionals are being paid significantly less than than even, you know, well, number one, than people in the other districts in the SAU, but very significantly less than others in similar positions in surrounding, in the surrounding area. So we had talked about, you know, bringing that up to make it more in line with, with what seems to be appropriate compensation for that position. And I don't, I don't have my notes handy on that. Michelle, do you? I, I
Yeah.
My, I, I hate to say it, but I assumed that, that based on our conversation, it was going to end up getting put into the proposal.
That's what my impression was.
So I'd have to go back and pull my notes, but
I don't think we had settled on an actual amount, but I'm happy to make an adjustment to the budget to reflect something that's more in line with the other positions in the district.
I just want to, if, if you're okay with it, Michelle, maybe, you know, we can have a discussion once we look at the notes from those meetings, just to see what the actual percentage was, because I don't want to, I don't want to do something that's not in alignment with what we discussed with the budget committee. I feel like that would be, you know, kind of disingenuous in case we misrepresent what, what the intent was. And since I don't have the notes readily available at this moment, I would rather we table that portion at this time, if that's okay with everybody. But definitely, I feel like we should revisit that. Because I think the, you know, the intention between the budget committee and the board was to try and remedy that situation if at all possible.
So, Miss, Madam Chair, if I could, so this is our last meeting before the public hearing. Will we do kind of our typical process of having a school board meeting from six to seven on the night of the public hearing and, and finalize some of these things?
Right.
Okay, so Michelle, I think what you need to be doing is, is to make that adjustment, send all the information to the board well ahead of time, and then the board can make their final motions just before the public hearing in January.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
From my recollection, it's not a huge amount, unfortunately. I mean, I don't think it's going to make a major impact, but I do think it's something that, you know, the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here is to make sure that, you know, we're appropriately compensating our staff and so we can retain people doing a wonderful job. And if we can, I don't reflect that, I think we should. Okay, I'm just reviewing the slides that you sent here, Michelle. And I'm looking to the other board members to see if you have any questions about this presentation. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. You know, it's, looks like it's very much in line with what we presented in years past.
I'm happy to make any adjustments or add information.
Adam, do we think there's going to be any, any major change or, you know, significant bombshell with regards to the, to the roof estimate that's coming? I mean, I know we've got this slide here on, you know, where we're at with that. And do we think, do we have any idea what that might look like?
I wouldn't hazard a guess. It's, I just, I don't know until we get the bids back what it'll look like, but if it's, if the number's too high, we'll adjust. If it's too low, we'll be happy.
Okay.
I'm wondering on slide, I think it's 12, it lists, you know, items that are not in the budget. Do you want to keep that slide in there? In all the items that are listed, we have the retaining wall for the basketball court, bathrooms across the library, glycol for the closed loop system, and then technology items, server and domain controller file server.
You know, from my perspective, and I, and I'm going to look to the other board members to, to weigh in on this as well. I think it's a good idea to keep that slide in, just so that the public is aware of other things that we're looking at. You know, and these are, these are some big ticket items here, you know, and we've made the decision right now that clearly they're not going into the proposed budget because this is a tight year. But I do feel like it makes sense to, to keep the community informed. So I would like to keep, you know, the, the slide in there, but I'm going to look to the other board members for your input on that. So anyone want to weigh in on that slide? I think it's slide, I'm not sure what night it is.
What, 12?
Thank you.
I agree. I mean, I'd like to know what's sort of coming up and what needs to be done at our building.
Okay.
I echo that.
Okay. Pete Scott, same sentiment?
Yeah, I was going to say that when I saw that line item for the retaining wall for the basketball court, I can remember him, again, dating myself, but 40 plus years ago, probably now, but my kids were at carpenter school in Wolfboro, and there was a pennies for playground project, and everybody through the community did pennies. And then we had a workday or two days, and we all jumped in and dug holes, poured concrete, cut, screwed, whatever. And I guess my question is, do we throw that out to the community and say, look, this is what we estimate the cost to be? But if everybody wants to sign up and, and jump in, we can do it for, you know, one tenth of the cost, buy the materials. And we have a workday for two days up there and, and get it done. I mean, I think that's the avenue we should take on some of these projects. And that was one that jumped out as like, you know, I think we can do it for pennies on the dollar with volunteer work and, and ingenuity and smarts and people in the community versus just contracting it out. So that was, that was my one thought on that.
So we do, I do have, you know, some information. There are a few trusts in town that there is some funding that we could apply for to see if we could put it towards that project. It certainly is nowhere near even half of what that estimate is at. Allison Miller was kind enough to provide me with the data. There's, there's around $6,300 in the Skandarian number four trust. There's the Whipple Shed Trust that has just under $2,000, and there's the Bancroft Long Trust. That's also just under 6,300, but clearly, we could apply for some of that funding, but it wouldn't, you know, I doubt that we would get all of the funding from there. That's, that's a lot to ask. But there is some, there would be some money available to put towards, to put towards that from the town potentially as well. So, you know, I can add that, maybe we add that to the slide, Michelle, just to say that, you know, there's potential for us to, to do that. So I'll forward you that information. I've never applied for anything through the town trust before, so that would be a new process for me, but we can certainly talk about, about what that might look like. And at least that would round out the slide so that people are aware of what, what is available.
Thank you. Um, okay. Any other discussion on, on that presentation? Anyone have any other comments? I mean, to me, like I said, it, it looks like it's fairly similar to what we had last year with, with the updates that we have. You know, noting the tuition agreement that's, that's coming up. The bus contract is, is another, you know, notable, I think, I think sharing the highlights with the community certainly helps to, to make it easier to know where, what the big asks are. So those would be the, the big ones, the tuition agreement as well. Is the tuition agreement on there?
It's, yeah.
Yep.
Just noted as an item at this point.
Yeah, okay. And the MBEA, CBA on there as well. Mr. O'Keefe?
We're missing the tax impact slide, the $300,000 house. If we can get that added back in there.
That is a great slide, yes.
I don't think we had that at the time of the budget hearing last year, but I'll work to put something together.
That would be great. Okay. And if anyone, if upon further review, if any board member has anything, you can either email me directly and I'll work with Michelle to get that put together so that we have something that's, that's presentable. But I'm feeling pretty good about the draft at this point. Adam, is there anything that looks like is missing from your point of view? I mean, you've done this a million times too. So I don't see anything that's glaring at me, but maybe there's a flashing neon sign that I'm missing.
No, the public hearing is not meant to be as detailed or as descriptive as the deliberative session. So it's meant to, the purpose is really to warn the voters of what you're considering to bring forward, hear from them, so you can make changes if you need to. So the presentation's pretty solid. Michelle, say a good job with it.
Thank you, and thanks, thanks, Michelle.
Welcome. I was also, I'm just going to say that I'll check with Karen to see if she wanted to provide any information from the budget committee's perspective. I did put a slide in there, and, but I don't know if she wants to, you know, share anything or not.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. They did such a great job that our budget committee was really engaged this year. I, for one, certainly appreciated that, and I thought the process was, was very helpful.
Hey, Sarah and Michelle and Adam, just one thought I had when I was looking through it is the, the budget composition slide, I know it's a pie chart, and it just seems we should also have a second slide just with the line item. So it says, you know, bullet points, salary, 22 point, I can't read it right now, but 22.9 and and just basically top to bottom, what the impact of each piece of pie is, because it's a little bit busy. A little bit hard to read. And if we put that into just a bullet point of budget composition, bullet points and percentage of the budget, I think one might be helpful. That's all.
So just making that bigger, almost putting it in a table form as well?
Put it in a table or just like I said, just a simple Excel bullet point of budget composition. Number one is salary, which everybody knows. And then number two is healthcare or whatever. I don't know what the bullet points are, but instead of just a simple pie chart, just a line item, top to bottom.
Hearing the, the dollar amounts that make up those.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, did anyone have any comments on, on, I mean, the proposed article wording is what it is. So I mean, it's really just a matter, I think, of plugging in the, the numbers, and that all looked good to me. But if anyone had anything that they wanted to say about those, I think this would be an appropriate time to bring it up. Anyone have anything on any of those? No? Okay. Okay, so we are then up to our second public comment time. So I'm just going to make my screen bigger here so we can see if we have any public comment. And just a reminder, if you are attending the Zoom meeting as a member of the public, you can use the raise your hand feature. And then we can call on you, or there is also a Q and A if you'd prefer to ask a question that way. I know that we've had some public interaction about our, our budget process that's always welcomed. We thank, you know, we thank the public for their interest in the process and for checking the numbers and, you know, reviewing that. We certainly appreciate the, the transparency that the administrators have been able to provide us in the last few years. The process is a lot different than it used to be. So, you know, we're, we're all kind of able to review the materials and, and be able to have a really open dialogue about that. So I know a lot of questions have already been asked, and I'm, I'm guessing that at this point, maybe all the questions have already been asked and answered. And so I'm not seeing any, any public wishing to make a comment at this time, and I don't see any open questions either. Okay, so let's click back over here. I believe we do have a, a non-public session this evening. Before we get into that, do any board members have anything else that we missed on the agenda that needs to be brought up at this time before we head into a non-public? Just scanning, I don't see anything. Okay, so do I have a motion to enter non-public? Mr. O'Keefe?
I make the motion into a non-public. For RSA 91832
A, C, and K.
A, C, and K.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that motion? Mr. O'Keefe, thank, or Mr. Eckhoff, thank you. So let's do a roll call vote for that. Mr. St. Dennis?
St. Dennis, yes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, yes.
Mrs. Hinkley?
Hinkley, yes.
Mr. Eckhoff?
Eckhoff, yes.
And Lawrence, yes. So we are going to head into our non-public session at 7:02. And Adam, if you can facilitate that.